Good evening, welcome. This is our, we're gonna start off with our budget hearing. This is our first budget hearing. We're required by state law to have one, but we're also gonna have another one at our next meeting and the vote will be in our June 4th meeting. With that, we're gonna ask Melissa to come up and make the presentation.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening the FY25 budget proposal that will carry us from July the 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. Alright, with the budget that I'm presenting to you tonight, it is based on accomplishing the mission and strategic goals of the county to provide high-quality services in a fiscally responsible manner to all the citizens in Oconee. And to illustrate some of the strategic goals within the presentation as well, and to illustrate how we're meeting those goals in the vision of the county through government smart growth infrastructure and quality of life. So we'll start with our general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund of Oconee County, and in fiscal year '25, we're proposing a balanced budget of $40,733,328. Balanced meaning that the revenues that we will collect are also the same number as the expenditures we anticipate. From a little bit of a perspective, that's an increase over prior year's original budget, which is fiscal year '24 that we're currently in, an increase of 4.89%. So I'd like to take a look at the changes in revenues and discuss those changes and looking at those revenues by sources. How those revenues are collected for the county. You can see on the right-hand side, a comparison between the current year FY24, our amended budget as it is today, and our proposed budget in FY25. Our property taxes are our largest source of revenue for the general fund at 47.9%. And you'll see an increase in the property tax line item. That increase is related to real property taxes and the digest growth change. We took our actual collections and remainder of the year collections anticipated, and that growth change added an additional $600,000 to arrive at our budgeted number of 19.5 million. Local option sales tax is 26.3% of the general fund budget. Not a lot of change between current year and next year. We have seen over the course of the year that our revenues are starting to flatten out on sales tax. We don't see the increases that we've seen before. So we are being conservative and keeping that level for the proposed budget. Other taxes at 11.4% of the proposed budget with a slight decrease. That decrease is related to real estate intangible taxes as well as transfer taxes decreasing. It also is offset by an increase in what we expect to collect on our insurance premium taxes. None of the other categories are less than 10% of the general fund proposal, and it consists of charges for services, licenses and permits, grant funds, fines and forfeitures, investment income, rents and fees, and sale of assets. Of other note in the chart, you can see that the revenues are fairly consistent across the years. Investment income, we are keeping at a conservative level. Our actual numbers are greater than that, but we don't want to rely on those numbers for our operating budget. And sale of assets in FY25 decreases significantly as we don't currently have any planned buildings for sale like we did in the current fiscal year. So proposed expenditures itemizes how we anticipate spending, the revenues in FY25. Of various different ways, it will show you all the details. So the first is kind of a summary by the departments that will use the funds with the same comparison to our current fiscal year's amended budget to the FY25 proposed. So our law enforcement jail and E911 funds represent 29% of the total general fund budget with the increase in that category being related to personnel changes. Administration and operations at 17.6% of the proposed budget. We'll see a decrease in that line item related to the asset sales that we have in the current year and those funds being transferred out to our capital fund for project reserves. Again, that's not budgeted in FY25 proposed. And the public works represents 10.2% of the recommended budget. The decrease that you see in FY25 is just projects that are concluding in the current fiscal year and that are not budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. As a whole, these are fairly flat, kind of looking across the remaining of the departments with not many major changes. But I do wanna go through a listing that I have of various things that are budgeted within each of these departments. So I'll start at the top of the list with law enforcement jail and E911. We have, which you'll hear me say maybe several times, the life cycle management program of equipment that's replaced annually for them to kind of phase in new equipment that they might need for new personnel or to replace equipment that is no longer up to date or may not be operating. So we've added to this program for law enforcement, jail and E911, providing for additional armor, tasers, in-car cameras and radars. At the jail, we've added an upgrade to their locking system, an agency-wide conversion to Office 365, and annual contributions towards larger purchases that aren't made each year, such as computers, body cameras and mobile data terminals. In our administration and operations category, we've included IT onsite services with our contracted vendor. We're adding UPS backups to our lifecycle management program for IT as well as a storage area network upgrade for IT. We've included the GIS flyover as an annual cost in the FY25 budget was also in the FY24. For our fleet maintenance department, we're including a tire machine and an AC maintenance machine for vehicles as well as the purchase of vehicles in the lifecycle management program. In public works, we've budgeted for two grounds maintenance pieces of equipment and included LMA grant funding that will be used for paving in the amount of $750,000. In parks and recreation, we are also budgeting for two pieces of equipment for their grounds maintenance as well as small equipment items such as outdoor picnic tables, fitness center equipment and sporting equipment. The economic development civic center and tourism category includes our bond services, a Costco bond, a Caterpillar bond, and our Parkway Boulevard, Boulevard bond is located in this line item. And this is the last instance in our FY25 proposed budget that we'll see the Parkway Boulevard bond debt service that will be paid in full November of 2024. Public safety includes fire, EMS, EMA and animal services for which we've included training equipment to include a forcible entry simulator, a live burn container, training mannequin and CPR mannequins and AED trainers as well as maintaining our annual AED lifecycle management program and building maintenance needed at some of the fire stations. And at the animal services building, a key card entry system as well as replacing the kennel doors in the existing building. For the clerk of courts, we're continuing the indexing of files so that their files can be accessed electronically. In courts, we have an addition of probation fees as well as annual grant match support for our voca grant and the district attorney's office of $90,000. In property appraisal, we're including an interactive appeal software implementation. And with elections, we're budgeting for a general election and a runoff. So we'll slice the expenditures in a different perspective. Instead of by function of use, we'll look at the classifications. So personnel and employee benefits make up 55% of our general fund proposed budget. And you'll see that that's an increase over prior year of 1.6 million. What we're proposing is an increase in the base level of our pay charts and the amount of $2,500 as well as step increases for employees who qualify. We don't have any new positions included or retired positions, but we do have a transfer to reduce one employee from our fleet maintenance department and move that employee to our code enforcement department within planning. There is also a request to move one part-time position into a full-time position. Operations and maintenance is 26% of our general fund budget. And the decrease that you see there is related to the public works projects that were in prior year. Capital outlay makes up 1.3%, and we'll have a more detailed slide for you on that here in a moment. Other agencies at 2.7% of the budget, debt service at 5.6% of the total, and support to other funds at 8.7%. That decrease related to the move over to the capital reserve fund for future projects. So that FY25 is at more of a base level than it was in FY24. And our general fund proposed capital items, which you've already heard in the list, these are classified as capital. So our IT storage area network upgrade, the fleet maintenance vehicle program, jail locking system upgrades, the public works equipment is the mowing equipment as well as public works infrastructure, and the parks facilities equipment is groundskeeping equipment as well. In addition to our general fund, there are several other funds that we're required to keep separately and budget for. So our total proposed budget, including what we've just discussed with the general fund, our capital fund, SPOST fund, special revenue and enterprise funds. The proposal is $76,834,919, which is an increase of 2.42% over prior year with that increase being related to everything that we've just discussed in the general fund. I'm looking at it from the same perspective. We have the revenues by source with property taxes at 26% of the total budget, water and sewer revenues at 18.9%. You can see the local option sales tax and transportation special local option sales tax, which is T-SPOST as well as the special purpose local option sales tax of SPOST. All of those totaling 37.1% of sales tax for the county. And from there, all of the remainders are less than 10%. And total expenditures, I wanna point out here, the expenditure number of 76 million is different than the revenue number on the previous slide of 75,196,478. And what that represents is that in our total budget, we are planning to use a balance of fund balance. So in previous years, we've had revenue collected either as restricted funds or assigned fund balance that we would like to spend in FY25. So expenditures here, water resources at 20%. We'll take a look at their funds specifically. Public works at 19.4%. Just keep in mind here that public works also contains the T-SPOST expenditures. Law enforcement jail and E911 comprising 17.4% of the total budget. And administration and operations, which includes the commission, finance, fleet, IT and GIS as well as administration and operations at 15.1%. And included in this budget of 11.6 is 3.3 million that is distributed to intergovernmental agencies, municipalities from our SPOST and T-SPOST based on our collections. So from our capital fund, the capital fund is used for capital projects that may span multiple fiscal years or capital purchases that also may span multiple fiscal years. As you can see, our list of planned expenditures here including a funds for county facility improvements of 50,000, our lifecycle management program for the jail and for public safety. You'll notice the E911, two items, the Viper communications upgrade and the UPS backups at the tower are both using lifecycle management funds and using fund balance. The parks FY24 mowing equipment is in the general fund FY24 budget, but the equipment has not been received yet. So we anticipate that arriving in FY25. So we'd like to assign the fund balance in '24 here to the capital fund so that we can extend that in FY25. And finally, the Hog Mountain Multi-Use Path Preliminary Services, so design work and any acquisition services or easements at 81,000, also using fund balance from the capital fund. SPOST 2021 is also one of our capital funds but required to be kept separately. So total budget of $6,483,505. And the items listed here are the planned expenditures. So we have debt services for parks and the administrative building. We have paving at 2 million. Law enforcement vehicles, we have set at zero pending approval of your consideration to purchase those vehicles in FY24. Fire rescue vehicle and equipment includes a Septon Pumper Truck that has been budgeted in FY24, being it will not be received until FY25. In addition to equipment for fire rescue as well. Water and sewer facilities includes Epps Bridge Pump Station and McNutt Creek Sewer Interceptor Land and Easements. And also Veterans Park Lift Station Upgrade Design Services. And then municipality distributions are based on the actual collections. T-SPOST is a budget of $10,696,150 to be spent on paving, related services and allocations and distributions to municipalities. And specifically our water resources fund proposed budget of $15,471,581 at an increase of 0.65% over prior year. On the summary here, you see the revenue sources on the left and the expenses on the right. The revenue sources are divided between the two departments within that fund wastewater and water. So you can see the decreases on the revenue side in each of the categories. Those decreases are related to capacity and availability fees. We are reducing the budget to our actual collections that we have seen and anticipate. Those are one-time fees. We get them often, but large en masse one-time fees that we don't get every year. So we don't want to have those budgeted and not receive them, but have plans to operate from them. We do have our annual rate increases for sewer sales and water sales. Sewer is at 4.75% and water is at 3.5%. And that is as recommended by our most recent rate study. On the expense side, you can see the total proposed is greater than the total proposed revenue. So in this fund, again, we're requesting to use fund balance, and that is for capital projects. And you can see the classifications here, personnel and employee benefits, operations and maintenance. Both of those changing slightly. Capital outlay, our current fiscal year contains Cause Creek Phase Two Plant Expansion and Bear Creek Design Services. Those are approved as multi-year projects. So as we approach fiscal year 25, whatever budget is remaining on those projects will roll into FY25 as an amendment. So that's why there is a drastic comparison difference on those line items. The original capital budget in FY24 was just over $1 million. Depreciation and amortization, since this is an enterprise fund, our debt service, you can see a decrease here. This FY25 proposal no longer includes the Series 2012 bonds that has been paid in full in the current fiscal year. But it does include the GFIN note interest for the Cause Creek project that is interest only through all of fiscal year 25 until the project completion. And at that time, the principal payments would begin, we anticipate in FY26. And fiscal year 25 proposed does include the 2023 issuance of the Hard Labor Creek Bond issuance. So with that, we'll talk about some of the goals that we believe this budget helps us to achieve when looking at our strategic plan. Commitment to public safety, transportation, maintenance and improvements, water and sewer infrastructure, and fleet phase replacement program. So public safety budget is 42% of the general fund budget, including the categories that you see here on the chart. That represents 17.1 million. And total budget, which is the chart, is 19.9 million. So you can see in blue, the operational and in purple, the capital, we've talked about the capital items, but I did want to give you a little bit more information about the operations. It does include the small equipment additions that we talked about for the jail and patrol and investigations. It also includes an increased training funds for patrol and the jail, as well as updated fiber for communication center at E911, while maintaining their current communication system as a backup redundancy plan. As well as elevated professional services and a general supply budget for animal services. When we did the fiscal year 24 mid-year budget amendments, we increased those levels due to the volume of animal intake. So we've left those levels in for fiscal year 2025 to support animal services. Transportation and maintenance, public works is a 19.4% of the total budget. With general fund paving at 750,000, supported by grant funds. SPOST at 2 million. And T SPOST at 6 million for a total paving budget of 8,750,000. The remaining of that 19.4, let's see, 14.8 million dollar budget is operations. Water and sewer infrastructure plan, this gives you kind of a listing of all of the projects that are already in design or coming into design. These are the preliminary phases. At the time, these are ready for construction, then we would present to you a contract and a budget amendment for approval consideration. And then at that time, we would move forward with the construction. So these are for easements and engineering services, as well as equipment and capital for the water resources fund and their vehicle lifecycle management program as well. And specifically for the fleet replacement, law enforcement, again, is typically funded by SPOST. I'm requesting to purchase those vehicles in FY24. Fire includes the Septon Pumper Truck, also funded by SPOST. But the 29,820 was contributed from one of our municipalities. Fleet vehicle replacement at 265,000 from the general fund includes a vehicle replacement for Parks and Rec, Tax Assessor's Office, the Fleet Department, and a bucket truck for the Road Department. And the water resources fund pays for their capital purchase of 94,000, which allows them to additional vehicle replacements. So that concludes the presentation for the first public hearing. As Chairman mentioned, we have a second public hearing scheduled May the 21st and budget adoption scheduled for June the 4th. Just housekeeping items, this presentation will be posted on the finance page of the Oconee County website. We do also have a one-page budget summary that shows all of the funds, revenue, and expenditures that we'll post on our website, on the bulletin board at the administrative building front entrance, and at the Watkinsville and Bogart libraries, as well as the proposed fee schedule, which we'll place on the finance page of the Oconee County website as well. And if I can, thank all of the departments and finance for all of the detailed work and research that they put into this and the communications with our team and administration to be able to put all of this together, and thank you for your time. If I can answer any questions, I am happy to do so.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa?
I've got one, Melissa. What's the impact on health insurance to our budget this year?
We've budgeted for a 10% increase without any change to employees.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would open it up to any public comment on the budget presentation.
Ms. Anna Hahn, Oconee County. Just had a question about the budget. I may have missed something. Is there normally a meeting where the departments come and present their numbers to the commission? And it's discussed, or how are you getting their their budget, their requested budget dollars, I guess, for each department, whether it's fire or water or money for fleet vehicle replacement or fire vehicle or water? Is that something that is discussed in a public meeting or?
Remember when we adopted the budget, some middle plan, we start, we'd send out requests to all the departments and constitutional offices. They return those back, that's reviewed internally.
Okay.
Recommendations are made from the administration. Goes back out to the departments, they have an opportunity to come in and talk about that. At that point, it's then released to commissioners for review, and then we come to this public. That should be on the website as well.
Okay, so because I, I thought that somebody said it used to be at a public meeting, I guess maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. Okay, that was just my question. Okay, thank you.
I'm Pam Hendricks. And just kind of a general comment, I've been going back and it seems like we're not getting as much information as we used to. Back in 2022, you gave something about the assigned fund balances, and I didn't see anything in the budget presentation about that. It's also confusing to me because we talk about this general fund balance, which I went to the state of the county meeting, and that's the only thing that was mentioned. Literally, then we went on the, a friend went on the website and called and said, the budget's 70 million, not 38 million. And I said, I think you're looking at the wrong county. I think you're looking at Oconee County in South Carolina or something. So it was very confusing how in the state of the county, you only talk about the general fund, but then it's much larger, the, you know, it's 38 million versus. I also, I have questions about how you're doing these amendments to the budget. Because I noticed that she said the amended budget for 2024, I think I heard this correct, was If that's correct. And yet, in the state of the county, it was talked about the 38 million. The original budget, the proposed 2024 budget was 38,834,959. So does that mean that we actually spent about five or six million over the budget? I'm trying to understand that. If anybody can clarify some of these things, it'd be great. One other thing I wanted to mention is in that state of the county, on the personnel, it looks like it's gone from 290 down to somewhere in the neighborhood of 260. But we did an open records request for all the salaries, and I counted them, and they were up, they, the number on that list was over 300. So I'm trying to understand how the personnel is supposedly 260, and yet we're paying 300, over 300 people. I, 306 or 309, I counted them. So anyway, those are my questions.
So the county is on the full-time employees? What you're looking at is people that are paid part-time seasonal that come in and work for Parks and Rec, just like we're having elections right now, those people will come in and go out, not the full-time employees. So we talk about full-time employees. We're giving counts, that's what the full-time employees, the ones receiving a full-time benefits and full-time hours. As far as the general fund budget, that's the one we talk about because that's what's related to property taxes. We don't go through at the state of the county and talk much about the SPOST because that's that's determined when we vote for SPOST, and then we provide these budgets. You'll see detailed budgets for what we're spending the SPOST funds on, just like for the fire truck. Reason they're not talked about is those are restricted funds based on the vote of the citizens of Oconee County. When we pass the SPOST, there's certain areas we have to spend those monies in, and that's what we do. But we can't spend it on general fund to cover taxes. Got to be spent on the item. Typically, we will not bond out something unless it's a huge, huge purchase. So fire trucks will, will collect SPOST until we got enough money to pay for the fire. Same for the sheriff's office vehicles. So 99% of all our projects are paid, pay as we go once they're collected. So when you're, when you're looking at the total operation of the government, that's, that's what that is. I can't remember all your other questions, but if you want to, if you want to, so yeah, all the amendments are done in this room, and we tell you exactly what we're spending it on, why it has to be amended. You can go back and look at those. We did have some one-time things happen, like we sold old buildings. Interest rates increased significantly during the term of that last budget. As far as fund accounting, you don't like fund accounting, I have, that's the way we got to do it in government. So it's not like the P and L you get for your business or that you might see in one of the organizations you're a part of. Has to be done, so funds have to be separated and accounted for. And that, that's the, it does get confusing when you're trying to track all that. If you have any other questions, feel free to shoot me an email, we'll get together, I'll be glad to go through it. Yeah, also, the enterprise fund is also part of that, the 70-something million dollar fund, so that's 14 million. So we call it the enterprise fund because it operates totally on services it provides. So water resources is not funded by property taxes from Oconee County citizens. So it's only funded from the users of that. We do allow for SPOST payments to go in there to help with some of the big infrastructure items that are done. But property taxes do not go to support the general fund.
Mr. Chairman, could I add a little bit of clarification? I'll add two, two items. There's, if we have unaccounted for funds that come in, grants are typical. The most obvious one that happened in recent years would be the Airs Act monies, so we got a pretty substantial amount. That amends the budget midstream, and so those things have to be accounted for in the fiscal year. And the other one, Melissa's probably tired of hearing me talk about this, but I call it the tyranny of July 1st. So there's, you know, the world keeps moving between June 30th and July 1st, but fiscal year is a hard stop. And so a lot of times you have projects that started under a current fiscal year, they traverse over it. For example, paving may happen, we budgeted under fiscal year one. July 1st happens, it all disappears, and so it has to be re-appropriated kind of at a later date. So that, sometimes those happen, but those do require functional budget amendments approved by the Board of Commissioners at a public hearing. So that's just a little bit of some of the examples of the amended budgets that occur outside of the originals.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Hood. I have a question. I've heard Sheriff Hale talk a lot about we're housing inmates from other counties, I think primarily Fulton County. And he said that we're being paid really well. So I'm just curious, as part of the income on this budget, does anybody have a ballpark idea of last fiscal year, how much we received from other counties to house inmates?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll get that for you. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and close our budget hearing. And welcome to the Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is May 7th, 2024. So we're gonna, after a moment of silence, we're gonna ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge, please stand.
Thank you.
Our first item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Thank you, motion carries. Next time, is any statements or remarks from citizens or anything not on the agenda tonight?
Am I good to talk? Okay. So once again, Jeff Hood, I live off Julian Drive, and you may have heard about Julian Drive lately because we've been in the news here locally because a couple of weeks ago, the Georgia Department of Transportation had a public hearing in Statham to give us an update on what they're thinking they're going to do on Highway 316. And for those of you that know specifically where Julian Drive is, it, it kind of starts over on Mars Hill Road, and then it shoots across 316 and goes into Deerbrook, which is where my family lives. But if you're coming up 316, we're in between Jimmy Daniel Road and Highway 78. So we were told maybe three years ago that GDOT was saying we'll probably get a flyover bridge. Then last summer, we were told we would have ride-in, ride-out, which we essentially have if you take away the median access. And then at this meeting a couple of weeks ago, they said that they're going to completely close our access, which I think would be a colossal mistake, and I've got three reasons why. One would be we would only have one entrance and exit out of our subdivision, and that is to kind of sponge off a neighbor, an adjacent neighborhood, Silverleaf. And they only have one entrance and exit which spills out onto Jimmy Daniel Road. In addition, there's Bell Road and Tall Oaks Road, which are kind of part of Deerbrook. They would all have to come in, go through Deerbrook, and then go through Silverleaf just to get to Jimmy Daniel Road. And I think for a variety of reasons, that's a mistake if we are not giving any, any other way to get out of our subdivision. Primarily, if there's a 911 call, it's kind of where they could come in off 316. They're going to have to weave their way down Jimmy Daniel Road, Silverleaf, Deerbrook, and to get to the emergency. That is, that's an issue. Also, just the fact that we would be putting undue burden on our neighbors in Silverleaf, that we would exclusively that we would exclusively have to go through their neighborhood. And then I would argue as a homeowner in Deerbrook, that if we're kind of landlocked and don't really have a way in and out of our subdivision, that it would negatively impact the value of our property potentially. So, um, I think GDOT also said they're gonna try to figure out another way to give us a way out. Um, I'm not quite sure. I know that land really well. I don't know what they're thinking. But I can tell you that if they're gonna try to cut a road to take us up to seventy eight near power building supply or back out to Jimmy Daniel Road, it's gonna be very expensive. So I have written to Russell McMurray, the DOT Commissioner. I have written to Jamie Boswell, who is the tenth congressional district, um, our representative on the state, um, transportation board. And then I've reached out to Senator Calzard, um, and Representatives Gaines and Wheatour. And, um, the only one I haven't heard back from is Mr. McMurray, but the rest of them seem to be like, yeah, this doesn't make sense. Um, so I know that I'm not like at the wrong meeting because I know you guys are not the decision makers. But, um, any input that you can provide to the DOT and hopefully leaving the right-in, right-out access, um, would be very appreciated. So just wanted to go on record and, and state, um, I think what is the feeling not only of me, but many of our neighbors, um, in Deerbrook. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment for anything not on the agenda? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? Just a couple of things. Early voting is ongoing and we're last through May seventeenth for the early voting. Also, we have some openings on our, some of our citizen boards and committees for animal services. We have three, uh, openings coming up. Oak County County Beautiful Commission, five. Family and Children Services, we have one. Tourism and visitors, uh, has three. May fifteenth is the deadline for application on all those boards. Now we'll move on to approval of the amendments. This will be for our regular meeting on April second, town hall meeting on April sixteenth, and our agenda setting meeting on April thirtieth.
I'm making motion, we said, uh, approved on this submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we have, uh, something fun to do, and that's a proclamation honoring our senior senator director, Mary Howard. So we're gonna ask Commissioner Thomas to read that resolution.
Whereas Mary Howard has dedicated her life to human services and has selfishly and steadfastly served Oak County County Government for over ten years. And whereas Mary Howard began her career as Director of Oak County County Senior Center on February third, two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Mary Howard modernized the Oak County County Senior Center to reach more older adults aged fifty-five in our community. And whereas Mary Howard increased participation in the center's activities and in the Congress meal program, ensuring members receive a nutritious meal, as well as participants a way to stay engaged in and connected in their community. And whereas Mary Howard has, was responsible for increasing awareness of the need to alleviate senior hunger and triple the number of older adults who receive nutritious meals daily via the Meals on Wheels program. Mary Howard successfully expanded the senior center building with grant funding to increase exercise and other programs for older adults in the community. And whereas Mary Howard has two daughters, Haley and Courtney, and one granddaughter, Cora. And her retirement plans include traveling, gardening, and spending a lot of time with Cora. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Oak County Board of Commissioners recognizes Mary Howard for her work with Oak County County Senior Center, recognizes her lasting legacy in our county and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, as Mary Howard Day in Oak County County. Uh, Oak County County Board of Commissioners, signed by John Daniel.
You know, she does such a great job. We need a building about three times that size.
Now we'll move into our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Uh, the rezon petition will be presented by staff with no time limit. Uh, the applicants and those sign up to speak for the petition, for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes. And also those wanting to speak against will be allowed a total of twenty minutes. After the public comment, uh, are completed for that time, we'll close public comments and open it up to questions from commissioners. And then the board will take action as set out in Unified Development. With that, we'll go ahead and call our only rezon for tonight, which is P twenty-four dash zero zero six seven. County Industrial Development Authority, uh, board initiated change in conditions of a previous rezon, forty-five point six eight, Aiken Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezon P twenty-four zero zero six seven. Oak County IDA is applicant owner. This is a portion of parcel B zero one zero seven two. It is currently zoned OBP in the workplace center character area. And again, the Board of Commissioners has initiated a rezon modification to amend the concept plan, architectural elements, and landscaping buffers for the unincorporated portion of the Oak County Industrial Development Authority property located on Aiken Road, parcel B zero one zero seven two. Parcel is located southeast of the intersection of Aiken Road and Pete Dickens Road. Full parcel contains fifty-two point one four nine acres. According to the plat, the parcel is split by the city of Bogart municipal boundary. The portion in the unincorporated Oak County is forty-five point six eight five acres. Parcel is currently zoned OBP. Uh, it was previously zoned TB in the technology business, uh, on December fifth, two thousand. All TB zoning districts were converted to OBP zoning districts in two thousand and nineteen as a unified development code amendment. Modification includes architectural elements and enhanced landscaping buffer standards. The two thousand and twenty-three comprehensive plan indicates the parcels within the workplace center character area and supports the modification. This is a recorded plat that you have in your application packets. This is the concept plan presented showing three sixteen to the north and Aiken Road to the south with Pete Dickens, uh, on this side. These are the concept plan section elevations, uh, showing the proposed berms, uh, and landscaping, uh, from the various directions uh, that will, uh, shield the, uh, development from, uh, public right-of-ways. These are the representative photos of the proposed development, uh, architectural standards. And this is an illustration of the proposed berm, of one of the berms with the landscaping, the imitation wood vinyl fence on top, um, as well as the evergreen, uh, trees and shrubs. And staff recommends conditional approval, uh, with our one standard condition. And then number two, in addition to the buffers as required by Article eight landscaping of buffers, the applicant shall install the following buffers as indicated on the concept plans. A, along the Georgia three sixteen right-of-way, install a buffer meeting the requirements of section eight oh eight to include a ten-foot-high berm with six-foot evergreen trees on top and a six-foot imitation wood vinyl fence on top of the berm. B, along the Pete Dickens Road and Aiken Road right-of-way, install a buffer meeting the requirements of section eight oh eight to include a five-foot-high berm with six-foot evergreen trees on top and a six-foot imitation wood vinyl fence on top of the berm. And C, along property lines adjacent to residentially zoned or uses, residential zones or uses, install a buffer meeting the requirements of section eight oh eight as indicated on the concept plan. The buffer may be reduced to eighty feet when there is a berm installed that is ten feet in height with six-foot evergreen trees on top and six-foot imitation wood vinyl fence on top of the berm. D, on the site and landscape plan, the buffer or landscape strip width shall be expanded to accommodate the berms as indicated. All berms shall have a minimum slope of approximately two to one. Number three, all indicated buffer areas shall have irrigation systems. Number four, all exterior property line buffers, landscaping, and berms shall be installed prior to the first building certificate of occupancy. Number five, no structural buffers may be placed within the required stream buffers or conservation corridors. And number six, the corporate office building one hundred shall have eighty percent brick and stone facades with up to twenty percent metal accent materials. Thank you.
So speaking for, we have Jeremy Phillips. Jeremy still here? He had a ballgame for his kids, so he had to slip out. Um, um, you wanna speak?
I'm here if you have any questions. Also, if you'd like to.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Do we have anyone wishing to speak against the rezon?
Karen Thalen, um, and I'm not sure if I'm speaking for or against, um, but I just wanted to encourage the Board of Commissioners to adopt the additional modifications recommended in the staff report. Um, the sale of this land is obviously a business transaction. And typically, we expect both parties to try to get the best deal they can. So it's not surprising that IMI and Rodwood or other property owners would try to get some concessions and, um, fewer buffer requirements because that would reduce their costs. And the county, the other side of the transaction, needs to take care of its budget and look out for its citizens. I think the staff, the recommendations in the staff report are looking out for the citizens. Having a industrial property immediately adjacent to residential isn't ideal. But the additional buffers would help, um, in that regard. I understand the county has carried that land for close to twenty-five years. And there's a financial cost associated with that. Um, the county has chosen not to use that land for parks or other amenities because it's considered too valuable because it's along the highway. The value of that land should only continue to go up with the recent developments in the area. And you might worry that IMI or Rodwood might pull out of their proposed, um, purchase if they have to spend more money on, um, buffers or brick instead of, uh, metal siding. But, um, it seems like development is, um, taking off. The land is getting more valuable. Um, and it seems that the county should be able to protect the interests of the nearby residents by requiring the additional buffers and things, um, recommended in the staff report and still manage the financial needs of the county. Um, and if the commissioners don't feel they can do that, um, I'd, uh, ask that the commissioners share a financial, um, the costs or how the money's going to be spent. You know, what the concern was about the risk of, um, asking for these additional buffers and amenities or stream protections and things. So.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Open up any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions. Guy could help me out. I appreciate it. Um, pull up the site plan for the, uh, fellow. I know it's kind of hard to see even with glasses, but I'm, I'm trying to ascertain that. Just to confirm that, it looks like most of the parking is on the interior of those buildings.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So is there gonna, so from looking at this, there'd be no access to the back of these buildings?
That, that's correct. You, if you'll notice, there are court docks here in the middle. So they are interior.
Uh, the, the open space is to, of course, that's, I assume that's a detention pond up in the.
Number, letter C. Yes, sir.
But on the right side, is that, that will remain?
That will remain undeveloped to this time. Yes.
All right. So that, you think it's gonna be, uh, like grass or?
I, I, I don't know. No, sir.
Yes.
If, if it is disturbed, it will have to be grassed.
Okay. Right. And the last question I had is, uh, two things that have become, um, problematic with developments like this is, uh, lighting. What, as far as the lighting, was it the more of the interior of the development?
Uh, it'll have to meet our code.
Okay. But I was concerned about the bleed over it, you know?
Right. And, and our code addresses that. Uh, so.
All right. You may not be able to answer this, but maybe, as you say, Tom's here. What's the proposed, like, hours of, uh, operations? Is that Tom Flynn?
Yes, okay.
We've all got gray-headed, haven't we, Tom? I thought I recognized your voice. Okay. And, um, God, remind me of what was, I know I read it, but just for the group, the, as far as the traffic that's been generated.
Right. This is a, a board-initiated rezon on behalf of the IDA. And that report had already been done previously for the development. So there's no rezoning in this case. It is strictly a modification of the architectural and landscaping standards.
Okay. So about what we're doing tonight is not increasing, uh, traffic.
That's right.
Is already planned.
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve rezon P twenty-four zero zero six seven as stated with the six conditions.
Oh, second.
We have a motion as second to approve reasonable request B twenty-four dash zero zero six seven with six conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is discuss and consider a budget amendment for the District Attorney's Office. Uh, as y'all know, the District Attorney's Office has historically received two grants to cover additional staffing. Oak County County provides the matching portions of, for both of those grants. Um, the DA's office received a reduction in grant funding for the Voca grant after the FY twenty-four budget was approved. So earlier this year, Oak County County agreed to cover the grant reduction through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four in order to, order to give the DA's office time to reach, uh, staffing decisions based on the lower grant funding. The additional funding from Oak County County at that time was one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. The Director of External Relations, uh, from the DA's office confirmed on April twenty-fourth that the DA's office had failed to apply for the Balance Against Women's Act, the BAWA grant application uh, for the grant period beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-four through twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. So funding will not be available, uh, for this calendar year and will not be available until two thousand and twenty-six if an application is submitted in fall of two thousand and twenty-five. We're saying that we're already four months into the, uh, year. We're, we're already in the hole. We're saying that we're already four months into the year. We're already in the hole. Last year, this grant provided $144,000 for two investigators and $167,108 for one prosecutor. There was a 25% match last year as well. That prosecutor position has been unfilled, and these positions are paid by Clark County through their payroll, and then we submit the grant funds plus our matching to Clark County to cover those. So with the, missing the deadline for the, the grant, if we don't cover that till June 30, then those employees will be out of a job immediately. So what the request, and my recommendation is that we approve to continue reimbursing Athens Clark County for the two filled positions from January 1 through June 30, 2024, using fund balance. And this will provide the DA's office sufficient time to reach a staffing decision for what to do with those after June 30, and also fulfill our commitment through FY 24. So the anticipated additional fund balance issues will be $87,060 addition, in addition to the $163,600 we approved earlier this year. I'll take any questions on that.
I have one question. Is the opportunity for the grant available going forward? I know they, I understand they, they failed to apply for the grant or just missed the deadline. What, I guess that's the same.
Application submitted by the deadline.
No application was submitted. All right. So is that, are those funds, that grant, gonna be available?
For two years. So that was a two-year funding cycle, so that would have carried us through 2024 and 2025. So their next opportunity to get that particular grant would be 2026.
All right. So what you're asking, the county taxpayers to pony up to cover that portion till June the 30th?
June 30.
All right. So we'll, they'll have to come back to us subsequent to that, June 30 funding?
Yes. But our communication to them has been, we'll get you through the end of the physical year. You've got to adjust your fund, you either find other funding, or you adjust your staffing to meet that.
Right. So the staffing is impacted by this. If we didn't fund this, and they, they've already worked and haven't been paid. I mean, I'm a little confused about.
Well, they've been paid. So it's gonna, it's gonna be very difficult to sort that out because Clark County's hasn't paid them.
Okay.
Anticipating the grant. So at minimum, I think we need to pay that four months where they worked back to Clark County. The ask is also to cover these two positions until June 30. There has to be a staffing reduction. It gives everybody ample time to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question?
Don't they have some open positions that'll help in the next fiscal year?
I believe there's some open positions on the the state funded part of it, as well as some Athens Clark County positions. Is it it's possible that they could just move these positions around to a different funding source without? But it's not something that can be decided quickly, I don't think. It's gonna take some communication with Athens Clark County to work that out. We'll do some comments in just a minute.
Mr. Chairman, give me that dollar amount that's increasing.
So to cover the budget through June 30, this will be $87,060.
And that will come out of our.
Come out of a fund balance.
Fund balance, that money that sitting there, doing nothing. This is what it's for, right?
Yes. Cover stuff like.
Thank you.
And so not to exceed? Not to exceed or just?
Yeah. You have a question? Now we'll take any public comment, Jeff. You'll come on up so you can.
Does the board know who was responsible for filing for the grant?
The DA's office is responsible for filing.
Is that Deborah Gonzalez or her staff?
That's the DA. I'm not, I'm not.
Okay.
Don't understand the internal operations.
Right.
That office did not file.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion we approve the budget amendment for the DA's office for the amount not to exceed $87,060 for the. Yeah, okay, that's good.
We have a motion and second to approve the budget amendment. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as submitted. Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. We have no need of executive session. Commissioner Saxon?
Motion to adjourn. Okay.
Are adjourned.